For September 20, 2022 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tab. The meeting is now being livestreamed on PPTV Services website and on Channel 28, and it will be replayed throughout the next two weeks, and you can check the district website for replay times. Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for being here this evening. Unfortunately, Student Representative McMahon is not feeling well, so she is watching virtually, but will not be joining us tonight. So before we get started, just I want to share a few reminders. We ask that everyone attending this meeting tonight, members of the public, staff, and board members, treat each other with respect. We're excited that you've taken time out of your day to get involved in our school district, whether to testify or just to observe. We agree to listen to your words and experiences, even though we may not always agree with your recommendations. In return, we ask you not to interfere with our responsibility to conduct the business of PPS, even though you may not always agree with our decisions. Our ability to do this civilly is what I believe makes our community stronger. If you wish to display signs and banners, please remain in the auditorium foyer back behind the seating area, and please try not to block any other attendees' view of the proceedings. And for safety reasons, we also need to keep all walkways and aisles clear. And in general, we would just appreciate it if everyone, again, members of the public, staff, and board members, be mindful of others in the room, and remember that we are setting the example for our community's children tonight. Our first item tonight is to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month in Portland Public Schools. Superintendent Guerrero, can you please introduce this item?
Yes, good evening, directors. Thank you Chair Scott. Last week, we began the month-long celebration that is known as Hispanic Heritage Month, with hundreds of students and family members, in fact, joining the annual El Grito event, which takes place annually across the street here at the Moda Center. This is the largest celebration to kick off the month in the Northwest during Hispanic Heritage, celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of families whose heritage comes from Mexico, the Caribbean, and various Central and South American countries. I have asked Marifer Sager, our Director of Communications and Language Access Services, to share some other opportunities for our students to be celebrated this month. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Marifer Sager. And today, I'm here to talk about Hispanic Heritage Month. As the Superintendent Guerrero mentioned, we have a number of events that will take place across the district, some of them in our schools, and some of them specific at the district level. So we're going to be sharing more of those news with all of you, but for today, I'm going to be reading the resolution in Spanish for all of you. So Resolution numero 6574, para celebrar el mes de la herencia hispana en las escuelas públicas de Portland. Considerando, la semana de la herencia hispana que empezó a celebrarse en 1968 bajo el mando del presidente Lyndon Johnson, se amplió a mes nacional de la herencia hispana bajo el mando del presidente Ronald Reagan, y se promulgó como ley en 1988 para abarcar un periodo de 30 días a partir del 15 de septiembre, fecha que representa el aniversario de la independencia de cinco países latinoamericanos. Los hispanos y latinos hacen importantes contribuciones a nuestra comunidad y a nuestra nación. Continúan aportando en educación, ciencia, arte, cultura, y servicio público, y han tenido un efecto constante y vital en el crecimiento y la prosperidad de nuestra comunidad. Más del 16% de los estudiantes inscritos en las escuelas públicas de Portland son hispanos o latinos, y más del 10% de los empleados son hispanos y/o latinos, y contribuyen al logro de la misión de PPS en cada nivel dentro de cada departamento y división del distrito. Nuestras escuelas honran y preservan los activos lingüísticos y culturales de los estudiantes de la comunidad latina y Latinx mediante los clubs estudiantiles como Movimiento Estudiantil Chicano de Astlán, conocido también como MECHA, con programas de enriquecimiento como la inmersión en dos idiomas, y los cursos de estudios étnicos, y con la opción de obtener un sello de bilingüismo al graduarse que honra y enriquece los diversos orígenes de nuestros hispanohablantes, y expone a los hispanohablantes no nativos a perspectivas multilingües y multiculturales diversas. Nuestro distrito y nuestra comunidad se fortalecen con el apoyo y la promoción de organizaciones como Latino Network, Hacienda CDC, Hispanic Metropolitan Chamber, Verde, Milagro Theater, y el programa hispano. La equidad racial y la justicia social son valores centrales de las escuelas públicas de Portland, y significan que creemos en el derecho fundamental a la dignidad humana, y que para generar un mundo equitativo se requiere un sistema educativo que altere deliberadamente los sistemas de opresión, y que genere líderes para alterar estos sistemas. En ningún momento de la historia de nuestra comunidad ha sido más necesario trabajar juntos que ahora, y es importante que los residentes de Portland se integren con ánimo acogedor e inclusivo para celebrar los talentos y las contribuciones de todos los residentes, incluidos los miembros hispanos y latinos de nuestra comunidad. PPS tiene una política de equidad educativa reaciaal que establece nuestro compromiso de superar de manera definitiva las barreras educativas que han sido la causa de una brecha persistente e inaceptable para los estudiantes de color, y de brindar a cada estudiante la oportunidad y el apoyo para alcanzar su máximo potencial. La junta de educación de las escuelas públicas de Portland cree que debemos celebrar y apreciar a todos y a cada uno de los estudiantes por las distintas y dinámicas contribuciones que realizan cuando comparten sus culturas, idiomas, ideas, creencias, y valores en una comunidad escolar. Se resuelve. Por medio del presente documento, la junta de educación de las escuelas públicas de Portland declara el periodo de 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre como el mes de la herencia hispana, y exhorta al personal, a los estudiantes, y a la comunidad a respetar, reconocer, y celebrar la cultura, el patrimonio, y las contribuciones de los hispanos y latinos en Portland, Oregon, y en los Estados Unidos a través de actividades culturalmente relevantes, y aprendiendo del pasado y comprendiendo las experiencias que han moldeado a los Estados Unidos. Muchas gracias.
Do I have a motion and second to adopt Resolution 6574, Resolution in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month in Portland Public Schools?
So moved.
Director DePas moves, and Director Lowry seconds. Is there any board discussion on this resolution?
Just that it's really fun to see all the activities going on in our schools and the different ways that each of our school community celebrates. So all month long, it's fun to get out there and see what's going on.
And there's some great highlights on our social media of some of our students and folks that are really great. Is that what you're going to say Superintendent? Beat you to it?
That, and just a couple of appreciations, first of all, to Lada Media, who hosted hundreds of our students who took field trips last week to participate in the cultural events, and then secondly, to the Consul General of Mexico, who every year invites me to make remarks just before he takes the stage to do his commemorative El Grito to the thousands that were there this past Thursday evening.
Ms Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
Great. The board will now vote on Resolution 6574. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6574 is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Okay, moving on, we're now going to vote on the consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items you'd like to pull for discussion, we'll set those aside for discussion and vote at the end of the meeting. Ms Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
And board members, are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda? Great. Do I have a motion and second to adopt the consent agenda?
I make a motion.
Second.
Director Green makes a motion. Director Constance seconds. And any board discussion? Great. Any public comment?
No.
Excellent. The board will now vote on resolutions.
Actually, actually, yes. Sorry. I got ahead of myself. We do.
Great. Any public comments, Ms Bradshaw?
We have Chris Reiser.
And if you could just state your name, and as I think you know, we'll have a three-minute timer.
Chris Reiser, he/him pronouns. I'd actually signed up to speak on the consent agenda because I thought maybe this had been removed in the interim, but there was a line item regarding the Leadership Academy. And the reason that I was calling to speak on that is because I put in a request for a document that they had produced called the Equity Review as part of an $8.2 million Wallace Grant Foundation for the Equitable Principal Pipeline, or something to that effect. And the reason that I wanted to speak on the record is because until today at 1:03 PM, I was denied access to that document. And actually, Liz, you might be familiar with the fact that you were reviewing that document to see if it could be released to the public. And I thought that was really interesting, because at first, I just asked for the person who invited me to speak in that forum for the document after the group who had interviewed us let us know that the document would be sent to you by the end of March. And so in early April, I requested it. The response I got was thank you, but we're still reviewing the document. And I said, okay, so that's a no. Let's FOIA it, because it is a public document, and this is a public institution. I was put through the runaround, hey, we've got to vet this, we've got to vet this, we'll get back to you in 15 days. Finally, I emailed after, I don't know how many business days, but it was longer than 15 since I had last heard from the public records officer. And then he said, I'm no, I'm sorry, the document does exist, it doesn't need to be redacted, we just have to run it by legal to see if it's, if we can release this to the public. I don't know about y'all, but that's a little shady to me. And so I just got the document at 1:03, didn't realize until I checked my email sitting in that seat over there. So I just want to encourage this body to seek greater transparency around issues of equity in this district. I also think it might have something to do with the timing, like tonight, there's going to be a major vote on something that really hasn't received a lot of public discussion. There's been precisely one meeting related to that. And so I'll speak to that later. But yeah, that was really concerning to me, that a simple document that didn't need redactions actually took months to get to me. And it wasn't until I told the public records officer that I was sending these emails to the press, and now I have the document. So that was pretty cool. The other thing that I wanted to speak, which is actually on the expenditure contracts, there's a group that you have called Vocovision LLC doing business as Blazer Works, beginning tomorrow through June 30, 2023. And you are using this organization to provide temporary special education staff in hard-to-fill positions, $729,600. Well, I happen to know that you guys, somebody making a spreadsheet decision, decided that they were going to take a paraeducator that was serving students in our, can I continue? Just complete this?
If you could just finish up quickly your thought.
I will. So we had a paraeducator working for three years in our Communication Behavior Program, that's students who identify with traits on the Asperger's Autism Spectrum, one of whom actually smashed their head into a window last year.
Mr. Reiser, if you could quickly finish the thought.
And so somebody said, you're going to move from that program over to Woodlawn, and then they quit. And then they took another paraeducator who was working in our learning center-
Mr. Reiser, I'm sorry.
And moved them into the other group. And so they're thinking about quitting. And now the third paraeducator who gets their breaks from the second paraeducator is thinking about quitting, because they're not getting their breaks now. But you guys are about to give $729,000-
Mr. Reiser, I'm going to invite you to send your thoughts to us by email so we can see them.
-in public funds to a private organization.
Great. Thank you for your testimony.
That's crazy.
Appreciate it. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any additional public comment?
No.
Okay. The board will now vote on Resolutions 6575 through 6580. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Great. Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero. And now, moving on to student and public comment. Before we begin, let me just quickly review the guidelines for public comment. First, the board thanks you for taking time to attend the meeting, providing your comments to us. It does, your public input informs and improves our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. As I mentioned earlier, our responsibility as a board is to actively listen, and to that end, I would ask each of us to give our full attention to the people in front of us. Our board office may follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. We request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have any additional materials or items you'd like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you email them to publiccomment@pps.net. Again, publiccomment@pps.net. When you begin your comments, please clearly state your name and spell your last name, and you'll have three minutes to speak. You'll hear a sound after three minutes, which means it's time to quickly conclude your comments. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up? I know we do, so who signed up for public comment?
Lurleen Shamdenden.
I get to spell it.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you. So good evening. Tonight, you will hear a present, oh, I'm going to give you my name and spell it. My name is Lurleen, and I'm going to spell first. L-U-R-L-E-N-E. Sham Sudin. S-H-A-M-S-U-D hyphen capital D-I-N. So thank you for giving me that opportunity. So tonight, you'll hear a presentation from Oregon Alliance of Black School Educators, World Arts Foundation, and former Portland Public School Board members, who have compiled compelling evidence to support a very special request. But first, I have a story of my own in enhancing this request. I'm a parent, a grandparent, and a product of Portland Public Schools. I'm a therapist, a manager, a former state commissioner, and currently the staff to ORABSE. And I tell you this because I want you to know my commitment to my community. I'm also a former employee of Portland Public Schools, having worked 10 years as coordinator of the Saban Demonstration School, a two-classroom school within a school, an initiative of the Black United Front, the National Alliance of Black School Educators, and Dr. Matthew Prophet. And their goal was to increase achievement for black children. The Saban Demonstration School met the goal of increasing student achievement by taking what we already know as best practice, high expectations, clear expectations, strong leadership, safe and clean environments, intermittent rewards, and ongoing evaluation for improved In small class sizes, students were taught the scientific method of inquiry, they studied their own interests within the scope and sequence utilizing new technology. They were the first elementary students to have full access to computers, and that was in 1986. They went into the community for field explorations, they had mentors, models, including star mentors such as Dr. Ernest Hartzog, city commissioners, business leaders like Charles Bedford, and our former mayor, Bud Clark. The students worked cooperatively and collaboratively to achieve their goals, and they excelled. According to the researchers, researchers and evaluators for the Saban Demonstration School, the late Dr. Walt Hathaway, and the very much alive Mr. Michael Chappie-Grice, their achievement levels were twice the district level of their fourth and fifth-grade peers in language arts, social studies, math, and science. These young people are now in their early 40s and doing amazing work in their respective fields. I have two seconds. ORABSE wholeheartedly endorses the renaming and portability of the Central Administrative Office, the BESC, and will support efforts in partnership with Portland Public Schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Linda Harris.
It's been a while. Good evening, Board Chair Scott and other board members. My name is Linda Harris, and I am a former assistant superintendent for Portland Public Schools. I support the name redesignation for the District Central Administrative Office to honor Dr. Matthew Prophet, an extraordinary man. In naming a building in honor of a person, both the person's achievement and the essence of who that person was and what he or she stood for is given due consideration. Matthew Prophet was a man of integrity, brilliance, fortitude. He was fair-minded, goal-focused, a visionary, a strong negotiator. Dr. Prophet always viewed programs through the lens of equity. He believed in the educability of all students, and he helped develop an educational infrastructure that advanced the achievement of all Portland Public Schools students. He was smart enough to envision excellence, wise enough to secure support for it, and courageous enough to move forward with comprehensive plans, and we know the positive outcomes. Some of us remember Dr. Prophet's collaborative management style, his retentive memory, his positive working relationships, and the respectful way that he treated all people. He created a very favorable image of the school district and the position of the superintendency. Sometimes people walk into our lives, excuse me, with a commitment to do good, and we see them as active contributors in creating a beloved community. By renaming this building in Dr. Prophet's memory, future generations will know that there once was a man who believed in students, who stood beside educators in support of them, a man who brought about meaningful and significant changes to their life circumstances. Dr. Matthew W. Prophet Jr. helped shape future generations, and for this, we are eternally grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Prophet Jr.
I'm here on behalf of my sister, Michelle, my brother, Tony, and my mother, Freddie, who's passed. And I want to thank the board and Superintendent Guerrero for taking the time to consider this proposal. I also want to thank the Oregon Alliance of Black School Educators, the Portland Opportunities Industrialization Center, and the World Art Foundation. I want to thank Lurleen for her kind words, Kenneth Berry, Dr. Harriet Adler, Renee Anderson, Ernie, and Marilyn Hartzog, and Stephen Griffin as well for their support. My dad always spoke with pride and love of the Portland Public Schools the 10 years he was the superintendent. When I would come up to visit, he would always take us on drives and seen countless schools. He was always very proud of the onsite professionals, the teachers, the secretaries, the custodians, the principals, the counselors, and their contributions to the kids, and the central staff as well. He was proud of the organizational and community support, the family support for the students. He was dedicated to all of the students of Portland. In particular, he wanted to set systems of support for students of color, for students that were economically disadvantaged, and for students that did not have English as a first language. And he fell in love with Portland, Portland's people, and upon his retirement, he remained in Portland for 25 years. So on behalf of my extended family, his seven grandchildren, I want to thank you for taking all of this into consideration and considering the renaming. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Good evening. Board Chair Scott, board members, superintendent, and the elders, who I consulted before I came to the microphone, named particularly Dr. Darrell Milner, great resource to our community. And I borrowed a little phrase from him to say, you know, if you want to have success, come to the microphone, be sober, be brief, and be seated. I'm already seated, so I'll just go. I could give you a personal account of the way in which I related to Dr. Prophet, and particularly to what I borrowed from him and learned from him as it relates to leadership, and it helped me along the way. I had privilege to serve as president of the Oregon Alliance of Black School Educators, and to chair the National Alliance of Black School Educators Convention when it came to Portland in 1989, and then went on, thanks to Gus Hawkins, and became president of the National Council on Educating Black Children. And it was Gus Hawkins' impetus that brought this booklet to publication in Portland and reflected the values of the National Council. And rather than refer to my own words, I would like to just read to you verbatim Dr. Prophet's introduction to that Star Book. "The tragedy of school failure, whether the school dropout or the underprepared graduate, touches us all. Its consequences include loss of esteem and loss of opportunity for the student. For society, the cost in hard dollars is staggering. A life crime or a long stay on welfare rolls do not automatically follow school failure, but countless studies indicate that they are common consequences. Extensive research has shown us the warning signs that indicate students' special needs." The blueprint, which is this blueprint for Portland, was grounded on the Blueprint for Action, which was a national model. "The vision of action and commitment begins and ends with our belief that all children can learn, and that everyone in the community has an important role to play in ensuring that they succeed, and that's the stakeholder model. The Portland Public School system traditionally has been a pioneering and opening doors of educational opportunity to its disadvantaged students. By rising to meet the monumental challenge we now face, we will reaffirm our faith in our students, in one another, and in our educational system." The work that led to this document began in 1988, when a district-wide steering committee of students and parents and stakeholders followed the Blueprint for Action and built its own tailored model for Blueprint for Action. But just as a tree is defined in part by the forest in which it lives, the material before and after the action's suggestion is important as well. It provides a background and information, solid suggestions for creating action plans and assessing our efforts. That's commitment. No plan is effective if its recommendations are ignored, if its various components fail to mesh, or if its potential beneficiaries are not served. This document, designed as a tool, is the tool to be used. I urge you to join me in taking up this implement of hope and progress. Matthew Prophet. And he was a big fan of Gus Hawkins, who is the author of the Title I law, HR 5. And I know my time is up, so I'm thanking you for hearing this idea and this proposal. And he left us with a quotation from Ron Edmonds, that we can, whenever and wherever we choose, successfully teach all children whose education is of interest to us. We already know more than we need in order to do that. Whether we do it or not must finally depend on how we feel about the fact that we haven't so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Jenny Gap and Claire Wilson, they each have a spot but are coming up together.
Thank you for coming. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Claire Wilson, W-I-L-S-O-T-N. Good evening, members of the board. When you know better, do better. What a great quote from Maya Angelou. I think you'd all agree, since it was the exact quote that was used throughout our mandatory curriculum training this summer. But the thing is, these words that have light to them, that are a beacon, become nothing more than smoke and mirrors when we are simply considering the optics. And by that, I mean the observers outside of PPS, it could possibly look like this district was actually trying to do better for its students and educators. However, this is an illusion. I wish I were here speaking today to commend the district's I wish I were here speaking today to commend the district for heeding the call of one of the most important poets and activists we've seen in this lifetime. Instead, I am here to ask why you choose to dishonor these six very simple but powerful words. If in your slide decks at these trainings, your guiding quote was, "When you know better, work in opposition to it," or "When you know better, act as if you didn't," I could at least be grateful for the honesty. Because honestly, that's what's going on here. Our community, the Peninsula community, staff, students, and our PTA sent you email after email and worked through the summer to send you signed petitions, begging you, pleading with you to add back our fourth grade classroom. We provided you with projections of class sizes that we are now seeing. With no response from anyone at the district level, we were forced to blend our fourth and fifth grade classrooms. And now, a month into school, a month spent learning about each other and how to move forward as a community, you're separating us? It feels like the air is being sucked out of the room all over again. My fourth grade students last year were confused and upset, as was I. They didn't want to combine classes, and they didn't want me unassigned from our community. In fact, some of them asked if they could use their own personal allowance to save my position. This should not be their weight to carry. As educators, we see firsthand the reality behind your illusion. Sure, kids are resilient, but to a point. And beyond that point, it's just trauma. And you, well, you see numbers on a page. How easy it is to dehumanize people when you reduce them to a number. I consider myself lucky because I was able to rejoin Peninsula as a first-grade teacher this year, but that came at a price. It had a rippling effect on everyone involved. I transferred from my placement at another school, which left them in a position where they had to scramble to find a quick replacement days before school started. I felt terrible. I felt guilty, but I had to remind myself that I didn't choose this, nor did I want any of this to happen in the first place. The decision was made for me, as it was for so many other educators. As for my colleagues who spent their summers reworking their year-long plans to accommodate for teaching fourth and fifth grade standards simultaneously, now have to again rework their year-long plans, among other things, after this year has already begun. And they're not the only ones. This late change affects our specials teachers and our office staff too, and most importantly, our families, most of which have the simple ask of stability for their kids. This was avoidable. You knew better, and you should have done better.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Superintendent. My name is Jenny Gap, and I'm the teacher librarian at Peninsula Elementary School. I've been a school librarian for 18 years. Eleven of those have been on North Emerald Avenue. I filed written public comment last spring concerning the way FTE is doled out each year. I am now here in person to address staffing methods and to implore leadership to reexamine how it is calculated and when it is finalized for the following school year. To begin with, I would like to know how non-student-facing positions, including TOSSs, are not cut before elementary classroom teachers. Do you ask yourself, what is least disruptive to student learning? I am here to say that adding back cut positions half a quarter into the new school year is about as disruptive as you can get. It is, in fact, disruptive to the entire learning community. If the budget is in need of austerity measures, how can you afford to add back positions once student bodies become less imaginary? Is it, it is backwards, and it is wrong. If it's beyond your control, if it's because of ODE rules and state statutes and bienniums and tax collection timelines, then tell us. Furthermore, telling us doesn't mean leaving it in the minutes of a committee or posted in Hour Three on YouTube. Come to our staff meeting and explain it. Zoom if you must. Instead of a culture of control and compliance, how about we foster one that considers social emotional impacts on students, considers workload on educators? If my principal fires me, I want it to be in person, not in an email, not on Page 132 of the district's financial guidebook. If you truly want to build trust and want your employees to understand the whys and why-nots of FTE allotment, then teach us. That is to say, seeing you in our building more often, accepting an invitation to a school staff meeting, would best help us understand. After schedules had already been made and bonds had already been formed, is it any wonder that one of our fifth-grade students stated in a recent class circle, "I'm just so confused about why they waited until now." Me too, kid, me too. As a specialist in my building, I must now redo seating charts amid my laminated library cards, re-upload class lists into subscription software, redo lesson plans, and reschedule other teachers who were using time that had been vacated in the schedule by the loss of FTE. When February 2023 rolls around, I'm going to have a harder time believing district leadership when they say, "We just don't have the funds. We're trying to prevent next year's cuts from being even worse." What obnoxious red tape is preventing us from telling a fifth grader, "Mr. Parker will be your teacher this year," and meaning it? You have allies in your school buildings, not enemies. The Peninsula community is ready to tell their stories at whatever level of government so decision-makers fully understand the impacts of an antiquated and oppressive methodology for staffing schools. Thank you for considering.
Thank you. Ms. Bradshaw?
That concludes general public comment.
Did we want to ask if the student had arrived? I think it was Elizabeth Kimbrough.
It was, yes.
Still no Elizabeth? Okay. Great. So thank you very much for those comments. Next up, I believe we're going to hear from our Portland Association of Teachers and President Bonilla.
She's virtual, so give me a second.
Oh, absolutely. We're going to whisk her in to the room.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. I am sorry that I couldn't be there in person, but I'm happy that I get to speak with y'all tonight, so thanks for having me. I, as always, want to start off with our kudos. So first, I want to give a kudos to the PPS leadership at our Instructional Practices Council meetings, as well as our Contract Administration meetings. So the Instructional Practices Council, for those who don't know, is IPC. And that's where PPS and PAT come together to discuss instruction, professional development, other high-level initiatives. And that's where we ensure that educator voice, professional educator voice, is at the forefront of those decisions. And Contract Administration is where we discuss kind of these widespread issues across the district that are, you know, possible violations of our contract, but where we get to try to solve those problems before we have to escalate it to another venue. And I just want to appreciate the district for their work. We had our first meetings this week for both of those teams, and folks were very collaborative, welcoming, engaged, and there were some issues we were able to resolve right away. So I just want to give that kudos and show my gratitude for that. So thank you. I have a few things to discuss. So the first is, I just want to echo what we've already heard about the renaming of BESC to honor Dr. Matthew Prophet. In the past, I've spoken actually in front of BESC about the racist history of BESC's namesake, Superintendent Blanchard. He'd done a lot of harm to our black community here in Portland. He and the school board had put the burden of integration on the backs of our black and African-American students, busing them around the community and closing down schools, as well as funneling students out of the catchment for Jefferson High School, which is one of our most diverse and has one of our highest African-American black populations. And that's a lot of harm. And I think, you know, there's a lot that we need to do in various spaces and various policies to try to undo that harm and at least pause ourselves and stop ourselves from perpetuating that harm. But I think one huge step is to ensure that our district building is named after someone at PPS who valued our communities, all of our communities, and valued our students, and wanted to make sure that we were serving every single student in our classes. So I just wanted to state that PAT stands in support of the Oregon Alliance of Black School Educators in their petition to rename BESC after Dr. Matthew Prophet. The other piece I just wanted to speak to was the, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, I've gotten a lot of emails from educators about having contracted COVID already this year during the first three weeks of school. And what they're finding is that as they are trying to recover from COVID and trying to cobble together lesson plans while sick, that they are being charged their sick leave before, in order to be paid while not being at work. And luckily for our Portland educators, under PAT, we have that provision in our contract that says that if we have to quarantine or isolate due to a public authority, health authority saying we need to, so for example, the CDC says we must isolate for five days if we test positive, that should not be charged against our sick leave. But what we know is that our union siblings don't all have that provision in their contract. And so we are really pushing for the board and the district to ensure that every person who works in our district, who is in contact with students and is in our buildings, is able to take time without worry of pay and whether they will be paid or not, so that they can get better and ensure that they're not bringing illness into our communities and into our schools. You know, we already know that we have quite the staffing issue in all of our sites across multiple, multiple positions. And we want to make sure that our, all of our staff, our educators, our custodians, our nutrition workers, our bus drivers, all have the opportunity to stay home and still be paid when they are sick, so that they can return when they are well. And then the last piece I want to talk is, talk to y'all about is around enrollment and FTE. So FTE, for those who don't know, is an acronym for full-time employment, and it's kind of how we calculate one full-time employee. We really would love for the school board to direct the district to share how additional FTE is going to be allocated to different sites. We've already heard from educators, you know, just now from Peninsula, talking about how they are now finally getting the FTE they need to have the appropriate class sizes for their students. And halfway through the first term is really impactful for our kiddos. You know, you spend the first three weeks building community with your kids and setting routines and setting systems, and that's exactly the point when the district sends that FTE to your building, and so now those students have to redo that work, right? And so we would like to know more about what the district's plan is to send those FTE to schools, how that's being calculated, and when that's being decided. I know, I'm sure most of you heard about the issues with Glencoe. They had three, they had two third-grade classes that hit the 33-student mark. And those community members received a letter saying that they were going to, they had two options. They were going to either move a fourth-grade teacher down to third grade to have smaller class sizes in third grade, or they were going to create a blend. Once they were given that notice, and this is not something we made up or that, a rumor that educators spread, there was a letter that was sent to families, right? The community members got onto Twitter and started advocating, right? Like, we were told that we were going to get that third section once our students hit this threshold that the district themselves created. And they, you know, they pushed for what they knew the district said was going to be their plan. And in the middle of educators separating their classes and reconfiguring sections, they were told to stop that work because the district was now going to provide the FTE. So I just want to make it very, very clear. PAT supports equitable staffing formulas. We support processes and systems that help us bring a lens of equity and helps us expose how those lived experiences that our kids have impact their ability to learn in schools. And those kinds of formulas also help us provide fair and equitable access to education. You know, I tell my students all the time, just because I have glasses doesn't mean everybody in this classroom gets classes, right? Fair doesn't mean the same. Fair means everyone gets what they need to learn. So I know that PPS is working to make up for the lost opportunities that are historically underserved students have had in this district. And they are trying to ensure, we're trying to ensure that those inequitable practices end now. However, I think PAT is very firm in the belief that withholding support from, and resources from other students and communities is not the path to equity. All kids deserve great public schools. All kids deserve small class sizes. And I understand that Oregon as a state has not fully funded education to the quality education model. I know that there are steps between, you know, what the district can do and what the state provides them the funds to do. And I know that we often get told, you know, we have limited resources and we need to invest in our priorities. However, as I've stated in the past, PPS added over 340 full-time employment FTEs, right? This year. And they cut 87 classroom positions. So you can find that in the budget book. It's under the FTE by major function and employee type on my printed version. That's Page 269. But I still don't know, where are those FTEs? They're not in the classroom because those positions were cut. Some positions are being returned, but as the educator from Peninsula stated earlier, sometimes it's too little, too late. Those educators have already left either that school or the district. And we don't want to create an issue where an educator uses their one transfer to go back to the community that they were a part of and leaves the school that they just got hired at needing more support, right? But we create that issue when we cut positions we then later add. So I think it's really important, and I think it's worthwhile to make sure that we are evaluating where these FTE are going, especially when it's that many. And it's, you know, I'm having a hard time to, you know, saying whether these are important positions or not, because everyone I talk to, whether it's central office or a classroom, are saying they don't have the staff they need to do the work that needs to get done. So, you know, we're lucky. What we hoped would happen has happened. Students are coming back, right? We're getting more students in classes than the district has projected. In some state, in some circumstances, we knew that those kids would be coming back and that there were just, you know, things that happen at schools that we know, some kids are not here yet, they're going to come back, their parents had to move, all those kinds of situations. But like we heard from our educators, it can be really, it's harmful to students. We're creating trauma. When we tell a student that this is your teacher, connect with them, create a bond, build that relationship that's going to help your educator better serve you, but actually, wait, you have a new teacher now. We want our students to trust us. We want our students, especially those who've experienced trauma, which is a lot of our students because of COVID, because of the losses they've experienced through COVID, we want them to feel secure and safe in our schools. And one way to do that is to plan on providing FTE to our schools in the spring and not in the fall. And I understand that there is that recalculation in the fall. We try to figure out how many students we actually have, but it's a cyclical thing, right? If I know that this school is overburdened, understaffed, the class sizes are large, and I have the option to send them somewhere else, that parent might take that option. But if they know that that class and those, that school is going to have small class sizes, they're more likely to send their kid to their neighborhood school. And so, again, my ask is that PPS, that the school board direct PPS leadership to be transparent around how these FTEs are being reallocated to schools this fall, and that we have a better plan for how we ensure those FTEs are given to schools in a timely manner so students know who they're coming back to. I've worked at enough SCI, excuse me, CSI schools where kids have literally told me, "I don't have to listen to you because you're probably not going to be here. You guys never come back." And that's heartbreaking as a new person in a building saying, "I want to be part of this community," that kids don't even trust that I'll be there next year. I don't want other students to have that experience. I don't want any students to have that experience. So we need to ensure that we have stability in our schools. And part of that is knowing and when and how to allocate that FTE. The other part is following the part of our contract that analyzes that analyzes high turnover schools, that works to stabilize those schools so that our students and our, and our communities get high-quality public education because their educators are there. And when they leave, we check to see why and we fix it so that other educators don't come and leave the district. So I just, again, want to thank all of y'all for giving me the time to speak. I hope we can find a way to think about how we share those resources where we ensure that we're not, you know, robbing Paul to pay Peter, but we're saying, hey, how do we make sure everyone gets what they need? How do we make sure that we are providing fair and equitable access to education? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Thank you, President Panio. Okay. Moving on to Board Committee and Conference Reports, I'm going to give people a little opportunity to give an update. I just wanted to loop back. If you haven't sort of seen the email, or those in the public who didn't know, we had a retreat, a board retreat last Saturday and had a lot of conversation about our committees. And one of the things that I think as a group we discussed was making sure that our committees all have deliverables with deadlines and, and due dates for those. What I asked in an email I sent late last night is that in advance of our October 4th board meeting, which is our next board meeting, if each committee chair could just make sure you have developed that list of deliverables with due dates and shared that with the board. And I think during our committee updates at the next meeting, we'll just see if there's any feedback from board members, any concerns or questions about the timeline or the agenda you have. And I think, I would really hope we all take to heart, I think, what we heard from AJ and, and other board coaches around really being focused about our work and trying to make sure that we keep it focused on student achievement and really pursuing our board goals. So with that, I'll just say, are there any updates from a committee perspective at today's meeting?
Just a quick update. I had meant to meet with our senior auditor this afternoon and didn't make it, wasn't able to make it. She'll be providing, we'll, we'll be working on our next agenda and we'll be meeting quarterly. And I will provide an update at the October 4th meeting. She'll be updating us on the audits that are underway.
I just have one. It's just as the liaison to the Climate Crisis Committee that we approved the community members, they had their organizing meeting, just to better understand what their, their charge was. And just food for thought for board members. One of the questions they had was what would be the most effective way for the board to hear from them as they do their work this year? They have an annual report, but given it's the first year, if there's some particular way board members are interested, so just put that out there. They also had a bunch of questions relating to the district's plan and also the Benson Project.
May I ask about that committee? Is, are they going to have a dashboard or how will they, will they have some kind of a dashboard to start tracking inputs?
It sounds like they'll have the district dashboard of the implementation. So they're just, they're, they're not doing the implementing or the operational work. They're monitoring the district's implementation. So my assumption is they would be using the district's, they'd grab a dashboard that would mirror whatever the district's implementation plan is.
Thank you.
Keep from bumping that. Thank you very much. Next up on our agenda, we'll be voting on an agreement to collaborate with the Center for Black Excellence to advance Black Student Excellence at Portland Public Schools. In July of 2020, the Portland Public School Board unanimously approved Resolution 6150. And in that resolution, the board included in the proposed 2020 bond, the modernization of Jefferson High School and the development of a community-inspired Center for Black Student Excellence, a hub for culturally-specific partnerships to advance Black student achievement in PPS by supporting Black students, families, and educators. That November, the voters of Portland approved the 2020 General Obligation Bond with an overwhelming 75% approval, making way for the first phase of design and planning of investments in Albina facilities and designated intentional investment in the Black community that is co-created and co-led by the community itself. I'm very excited to ask Superintendent Guerrero to introduce this next item.
Thank you, Chair Scott. I do think this represents another important milestone for our school system. Tonight, the school board is considering a vote on a resolution that will approve an agreement to collaborate with the Center for Black Excellence to advance Black Student Excellence here at PPS. This board and administration has long been clear and transparent about the impact of racism and historical underinvestment in Black students and predominantly Black-serving schools at PPS and how much that has led to widening achievement gaps over time here in our district. Much of this, as we know, has long been reinforced by racist cultural narratives, beliefs, and norms. However, I think tonight represents one of those significant points at PPS where we can move from talking about the issues to taking yet another concrete action. Tonight, we take an important step towards establishing the Center for Black Student Excellence. Creating a vision for Black Student Excellence at PPS will require all of us to be actively involved. PPS looks forward to connecting with and being inspired by our Black students, families, educators, and Black-led community organizations to do a few things, advance a culture of Black excellence, unify and elevate the Black educational experience, and improve outcomes for Black students, families, and educators. The values and work to be done, much of which is detailed in the cooperation agreement and the accompanying resolution, represent this focus. As superintendent, I'm particularly excited for the work ahead, tapping into the collective wisdom of our Black community in partnership with the Center for Black Excellence, which is a collective representation with organizations like Self-Enhancement Incorporated, better known as SCI, POIC, Kairos PDX, Albina Head Start, the Albina Vision Trust, and PPS. I'm heartened that they see PPS as a key partner and that they continue to be at the table alongside us as we seek to create a counter-narrative, especially given the district's unfortunate and historic track record with serving and supporting Black students. So we're embarking on this journey together. Our community has committed to becoming more equitable and just. We're grateful for that. And the path to that goal goes through this new and innovative endeavor like the Center for Black Student Excellence. So I'm excited to see what the center will do to support our curricular and instructional focus, how we support and engage our students and families, and how we recruit Black educators, staff, volunteers, and strengthen their capacity. So before I turn it back to directors for discussion, I want to acknowledge a couple of people. I want to thank Deputy Superintendent Dr. Cheryl Proctor, who could be with us this evening for serving as our executive sponsor and helping to guide this work internally. I also would be remiss if I didn't thank Camille Idadevbo, our Innovation Student, Studio Manager, who has been coordinating with the Center for Black Excellence Steering Committee to launch a community design and engagement process starting next month. So directors, I hope you're as excited as I am about the work ahead. This is yet another opportunity to get clear with a plan for how we together will better educate Portland's Black children. So I'm optimistic about what we, we can accomplish together. Thank you in advance for supporting this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Guerrero. In order to open this up for discussion and testimony, do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6581, approving agreement to collaborate with the Center for Black Excellence to, to advance Black Student Excellence at Portland Public Schools?
Motion.
Second.
Director Hollins moves, and I think directors to pass in green tied for second.
I was, I was hoping you'd count, you heard him as well. You're quiet down there.
Well, I was just trying to make sure that I didn't jump in front of Director Hollins on this one because.
So I, I will open it up for any board discussion. Yeah, we do have some public comment, which we can, we can move to. And then, does anybody want to say any words before the public comment?
I do. As I look through this and I'm looking at point B about how Albina was once thriving and creative, I'm testimony, I was, I was there for a large part of it. My grandparents lived right down the street from Dean's Barber Shop and Beauty Shop. And I saw the greatness of that community. We did all of our shopping there. My, my parents also, grandparents emigrated from Panama, also right to Williams Avenue. Neither side, neither grandparents had cars. We walked everywhere, did all our shopping. So I love that not only is this a plan for moving forward, but that there's a vision created, a visual about what this looks like, what the potential is here, the amazing potential of the people that are right here, that are raised here, and the people that will grow that come from here as well. So I'm really excited to support this.
And, and I'll just make a comment. It's a little bit off the cuff. I, I think what's, what I'm most excited about is that this is really, this really is co-creation and collaboration, and it's a new way of, of doing things. And I know when we talked about this as part of the bond, you know, that was a key value that we heard from the community. And I think the, the board reflected in that. And, and I think that's what we're seeing come to life here today with this agreement. One of the things that's been really bothering me is back when we had our, our budget hearing in front of the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission, Cascade Policy Institute came and testified, testified explicitly against this Center for Black Student Excellence. And, and at the time, I, I just, it, it bothered me and I can't really let it go. And, and I think the reason it bothers me is twofold. I'm used to Cascade Policy Institute, you know, testifying against a lot of government things. But the fact that they, they called this one thing out as somehow an inappropriate bond expenditure just had some underlying tone that, that I found very offensive. And, and I think that, you know, there is, we're going to spend these bond dollars appropriately. We always do. This is what we have bond council for. And I think the idea that we can't spend bond dollars to do something like increase Black student achievement is, is crazy. And, and I think we need to call that out and, and it's offensive. And, and I mean, we spend bond dollars on all kinds of things. And again, it has to be on capital. We know that. We're going to, we're going to put all those safeguards in place and move forward really positively. I think the other thing that really sort of bothered me, but, but turning a little more positively focused is this is a new way of doing business, and it's a way that government should be doing business. And the idea of not just saying, we know what's best for your community and we're going to come in and impose it, but instead saying, we're going to help gather the resources and come to your community and say, what do you need? What is going to be most effective? And, and, and what can we do to help? And, and that's why I'm just really excited about the agreement in front of us. And, and I think this, this governing, this, this governance model, I, I really am optimistic it's going to lead to that. So I, I think it's a super exciting day. Any other comments before we get to public testimony? We can come back around for a final round from board members.
I think I'll come back around after public comment because I want to, I want to make sure that, you know, people have a chance to, and don't feel like I've already made up my mind.
You have. Oh, my bad. Well, I've made up my mind, but I, let's hear from the public comment as well, so. Ms. Bradshaw, I believe we have some public comment tonight?
We do. Bahia Overton?
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. So actually, I was going to be up here with my other people, but I guess it will just be me. I'm Bahia Overton, B-A-H-I-A-O-V-E-R-T-O-N. I, BPI was left off that list, but we are included in this effort. I'm a member of the Steering Committee for the Center for Black Excellence. One of the things that I do really appreciate that Chair Scott said was that this is a new way of doing business. PPS has long, I won't say intentionally nefariously injured our children and our community, but that is the reputation. That is the experience that we've all had. And lip service, lots and lots of good intentions and consistent negative outcomes on the part of our children and our families. So the idea that we are being, co-collaborate, co-collaborators in this process, co-designers in this process is very encouraging to us. It is historic opportunity. As the CEO for Black Parent Initiative, really representing the community voice in this process and, and really understanding what it means to be community-centered in co-creating. Because people often think that they know what's best for us and then they kick us and complain how we limp in this community. That's been my experience, right? When I speak about the needs in our community, I never use disparaging language because we are an amazing community. We're beautiful, we're creative, we're expansive, we're promising. We're not disadvantaged, underserved, marginalized. Every negative attribution you can put to our children and to why they haven't thrived under this system has always been on the burden of our community members. And so I'm very excited to be able to step up as a co-collaborator and co-designer to say that we have everything that we need to thrive. We need barriers to be removed. We need the historical policies that have consistently disadvantaged our, our educators, have consistently barred our parents from having a say. You know, we are now, this is the precipice of something that could be life-changing for future generations. And so I'm very excited that we have this opportunity. But there is a need for swift and consistent accountability on both parts. And if our voice is silenced, it will become evident in the outcomes, right? So I just wanted to testify on behalf of our community, the beautiful, brilliant, amazing community, and to think about the way that we can, I would say, beam light and love to our community. Our educators, our schools, our teachers, our doctors even, offices, they do not light up when they see our children. They do not get excited when they see our parents. That cultural shift has to also happen with policy shifts, with new buildings being erected. Those things have to shift, and that can only happen when the community is at the table to design it. Am I talking too fast? Okay, because I get, I geek out on this. I'm so excited. So really, I want to talk about the, oop, it's over. But I'll just say this. I want to remember and remind everyone here that we have everything that we need. We have everything that we need. There's nothing deficient about us. We just need the opportunity to use our voice to design what's best for us.
Thank you.
Elaine Harrison?
Welcome, Ms. Harrison.
Good evening. My name's Elaine Harrison, and it's a pleasure to be in front of you this evening. I like Bahia thought that she was going to be up here with me so she could hold my hand and I could hold her hand. And Tony said, I think we're going separately. And I rolled my eyes at him like, come on. Okay, okay, thank you. So oh, thank you. So for over 55 years, Albina Head Start has been in this community, serving this community. We have stood for excellence over those 25, 55 years. I am new to this committee. Been here since January, but not new to the community. I've been with Albina Head Start for almost 40 years. So in that time, I could say that we have implemented many programs and things to make sure our parents and our children succeed. Albina Head Start serves the majority of African-American children. For the last, last year, program year, we served 50% of African-American children, 36% of Hispanic-Latino children, 9% white, and the other ones are mixture of Native and Asian. So majority of our families and our children are BIPOC children. So with that, we can say that we have had successful relationships and projects with Portland Public School. And a couple of them I want to mention is our Mandarin program that you're well aware of, that is a national model now too of excellence and how we take children as young as two years old and partner with Portland Public School to bring these children to where they speak in Mandarin and their families are speaking it too. And they can go through, I think they're almost up to high school now, pretty close. And another program we do with you guys too is we work with the parents, I want to get this right, with the teen parent program coordinator for teen parents in all the schools. The most vulnerable population I think out there is teen parents. And give them the opportunity to become great parents, excel and go on to school, go to work, go to college. Gosh, anybody could ask for that. And in a partnership, we do that with you guys. So those are good, two good models that I can mention right off the top. And how much time do I have? Okay, good. So I'm here tonight to talk about the relationship. We're trying to start with you guys for this, this new project, this Center of Excellence. And I'm so excited about this because I've been teaching and been in the community for many years. And I want to see a place where children and parents and community can go and be proud of it from prenatal birth all the way up to college. So that's my time. That's my signal. I hope you support this project, this relationship. It can be and it will be a national model. I hope you support this project, this relationship. It can be, and it will be, a national model. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Chris Riser.
Chris Riser, R-I-S-E-R. First, I want to begin by saying, many of you I know, I know of you, even if we haven't met personally. And I love what you do individually and collectively for this community. However, I have some concerns. I'm concerned about data collection on our black and brown babies. I'm concerned about what private organizations might get access to academic data, attendance data, health services, mental health services. And I'm concerned about how that technology is planned to be fed into artificial intelligence and the building of smart cities, and actually locking out people of color and manipulating them into an artificial world. This is happening with children in Ethiopia. Five million children in Ethiopia have been put on a blockchain where they're given a digital identification that will follow them into their economic life. And what they want to do is have a national ID for these five million Ethiopian children. This is called Cardano Blockchain, C-A-R-D-A-N-O Blockchain. Blockchain. Those are two words that are familiar to the African community. And I wonder about what the privacy protections are in terms of information sharing of highly sensitive data, especially given that the PPS vision imagines a world in 2030 where the lines between virtual and real, local and global, robots and humans blur. This is page 44. And it says toward the end that this has led to a need. Local and online learning hubs that respond to this rapid learning evolution cater to adults wanting to learn new discrete skills and knowledge quickly to make themselves more successful in this ever-shifting work environment, where we are being taught to adapt to the needs of machines, as opposed to machines adapting to our needs. This is page 44 of the PPS vision. This is how our system envisions the world of learning in the future, that using clever badges and making a built environment where you can just scan a QR code, now I'm at the library, now you have a library achievement. And then your employer can look at that information, and they can look at your behavioral information, and they can look at your attendance data. And so I want to say, we need to get out of the way of the black community, and let, we need to break those barriers 100%. But I want all of you to please be mindful of who you are partnering with and what they want to do with our black babies. Thank you.
Tony Hopson?
Wow. Welcome.
Good evening. How y'all doing?
We're good.
Good, good, good. I'm great, I'm great. First of all, the enthusiasm up here for this is wonderful. I don't know that we need to be here trying to sell you, because it sounds like this is all, this is all, this is all good. So appreciate that fact, appreciate having had many conversations with, with some of you already about this. The collaboration, the connectivity has really been, been, been great. Also excited about the fact that the constituents out there actually voted for this. And they voted for this with the Center for Black Excellence being a part of it. That's, that's a good thing. Now, being a person who's been involved with this for a very long time, we know that Jefferson probably should have been the first or second school rebuilt, not one of the last schools to be rebuilt, but better late than never. So we're ready to roll on with that. So here we are with this historic opportunity to do something really big, you know, something great, and actually something potentially transformational for our community and for this district as well. But it does start with this, with this vote tonight around shared governance. And it was good to hear you talk about the fact that this is a new and different way of doing business, because that's the way that we see it. You know, equal say for our community around what excellent, black excellence actually means. What our community feels about black excellence and what it actually looks like. Our community and how we feel about black excellence and how it is created. We having the opportunity to share that along with you. So historically, Portland Public School does not have a great record with making huge differences within our black community. That, that's a fact. The most successful efforts in the district, improving graduation rates, student achievement, college going, was done in partnership with many of our black organizations. Had a few examples already. One I would share with you, the most successful was really at Jefferson High School, where Jefferson leadership and teachers, with the support and services of Self-Enhancement Inc., turned a low-achieving school around to a high-achieving school. 54% graduation rate to a 93% graduation rate for black students. That's not actually excellence, but it's at least headed in the right direction. So we now have the opportunity to do that for black students throughout the entire Jefferson cluster. And hopefully, we can move this to service all black kids in Portland Public Schools with this same kind of effort. So the shared governance model provides the partnership to bring you the board's best efforts, along with our community's best efforts, to assure that all black students can experience their best efforts towards excellence. We all are excited about this. This is a new day, and this effort, along with other efforts that are happening in our community, I too think that this could end up being a model, not something that we have to dream about, but something that could realistically become our reality. So much love. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Bradshaw, any other testimony?
That concludes this topic.
Great. With that, let's open it up to board comments.
All right, I think I'll comment now. With, after listening to everyone, this was a tough one. I'm lying. This was probably one of the easiest decisions that, that I was going to make this evening. The, the only thing that, that concerns me is that, that any of us would think that we, as a black community, don't know what it takes to, to make our community better. I think there's not a soul in this building that, that would not recognize that the, the power in this room, the wisdom in this room, the years of experience in this room, and that there is nobody in this room that would ever sit back and allow something intentionally negative to happen to our kids and not think about it. Like, we're not thinking about the, the world that our kids are growing up in, this, this world where the algorithms on their phones are being sent to them by somewhere way overseas, where they want our kids to think that doing stupid things and acting a fool is the, the way to go and the way to become, while they're sitting in their spaces, teaching their kids that, you know, if you want to do the right thing, you want to be the right thing, then you, you know, you have to become it. And so there's no part of me that doesn't think that the people in this room don't recognize that and aren't prepared to, to do something, to fight against that with every fiber of their being, that they have spent a lifetime, for, for most of the people in this room, ensuring that young people, that they get a better opportunity, that they get the opportunity to be who they truly want to become. I, I spent many years working with, with Mr. Leary and got to see the countless kids that he's impacted. Ms. Renee and how she took kids that, you know, didn't really like to read, and wasn't even into reading, and then had these kids writing journals. And they, it was like, they didn't even realize that they could write that well. And, and to think that the individuals in this room wouldn't be considerate of these things is, to me, that's, that's quite alarming. And it's something that I wanted to make sure that we put on the record, that, that I don't believe that there's a soul in this building that is not aware of the, the giant that's out there in technology, that is trying to absorb our children faster than, than we can, and we're not actively working to, to push against that. And if they happen to make money in the process, then so be it. Because white America's made money off the backs of us for a long time. Why shouldn't the people that actually build up our communities and the people that actually pour into our kids, why shouldn't they make money too, off of something that they're probably going to give back to their communities and give, give back to their kids? So if they make a dollar in the process, then so be it. I'm happy for you. Because then you show our kids that if you actually do something that's better for your community, and it makes your community better, then you can actually get paid doing that. And you don't have to be a fool to make money. So I'm happy for if you make money. I pray that you do. I make, I pray that you make more money than you know what to do with, because if you get the money, I know that you'll bring it back to the community. So please, do whatever you got to do to make as much money as you possibly can, so that they see black people making money in the process of making things better. Because there is a correlation between I can make things better and I can get paid doing it, versus I'm going to throw an Xbox in the pool and then make a video about it, do some dumb stuff like that. And so thank you for, for everything that you are doing. I am wholeheartedly in support of this, and I want to see it done. And I don't know who the activist was that says, anything that you do for us without us, you do to us. PPS has been in the practice of doing a lot of stuff to us. They've been saying they do it for us, but they've been doing it to us. And the way, the reason that we know that is because you're always, you've been sitting around telling me, I know what's best for you. I know what you need. And if you're going to, this is going to be so much better for you. You're going to love it. You're going, it's going to be great for you. And it turned out to be not so great. Now we're actually in the process where we're saying, you know what, we messed up. And we're going to do it differently. And so instead of us telling you what, what's best for you, we're going to listen to you tell us. And then we're going to put our money where our mouth is, because let's just face it, the money that we putting in here is nothing more than seed money for what they're trying to do. It really isn't going to get the job done. We're just a seed in the bucket. And so let's not act like we're doing something fantastic. We're doing the bare minimum. If you really look at it, we should be looking at all of our dollars that we've got and saying where we can spend more, and how do we work this? Because I believe it's going to be bigger than just Jefferson. It has to be. Because there's some amazing kids over in the Roosevelt cluster. So I'm tired of y'all leaving Roosevelt out, like Roosevelt don't matter. We go, there's enough of this already. We got to start thinking about Roosevelt and George, too. So stop it already. But no, I'm excited about this, and I'm wholeheartedly going to support it. And so I'm going to stop talking, because, that's the other thing, they're going to censor me. They told me I only got 10 minutes to talk. I'm done.
We weren't timing you tonight, Director Green. We weren't timing you tonight. Director Bren Edwards?
Yeah. I'm with Director Green. Very supportive. And I go back to like, before the bond, where the community shared a vision of what Albina's future could be and what black student excellence could be. And there's lots of different pieces to it, and PPS has part of it. And, you know, critically in the bond, we put the money in for the Jefferson modernization and for the Center for Black Student Excellence. And at the time, just to reference Director Scott's comments, that there was the question of, well, like, what is it? And really pushing on the board to be more definitive. And we told the voters it was going to be co-created. And I don't know that, I'm trying to think in my, in my memory, whether, where we ever, as a community, said, we're not going to say what it is, but we're going to co-create it with the community, and the voters just approved it. So those two really critical pieces. And then another piece to this that is all part of the, the bigger puzzle is the, the, the work that happened over the last two years on the freeway caps and the money to rebuild Tubman. And that's going to be just another piece that all fit, all fits together. And all, whether it was the bond or the conversations with ODOT and the state around rebuilding Tubman, about rebuilding spaces where, in Albina for Economic Empowerment through the IFI project, that was all led by our partners in the community. And PPS was there supporting it, but really driven by our partners in the community, by the black community, the black leaders. And, and all along the way, our community came, came with us. And I'm, from, from PPS's standpoint, part of the beauty of this is, it's not just the capital piece of it, but it also aligns with our board goals and the direction that the district and our, our, our school leaders and our school communities are also heading. And when the proposal for shared governance came up, it was, it was a novel concept. And the question is, is PPS, you know, willing to give up some of its power and its control over the future and the shape of it? And tonight's vote is an indication that we're ready to do that and ready to partner and be, be in this together. So I, I really want to thank the community leaders who pushed this vision and brought it here tonight, because the, the idea for it and the vision and sort of the muscling it through really came from the community. So I'm a, a big yes.
Thank you, Director Bren Edwards. Anything, Director Lavi?
I'm just really excited about this. And I wanted to apologize to our two speakers. We used to have folks come down together, but then because of COVID, we stopped calling people in pairs. But y'all are always welcome to come to the mic together if you want to, because I know this can kind of be a weird setting. So I'm glad you were able to do that. But I'm especially thinking about Albana Head Start and the incredible legacy and that partnership and flourishing more with this. It's just, it's phenomenal. And I hope that we continue to co-create with all sorts of partners as we continue to do our work. Because I think all of what the public commentator said about knowing what's right for the community and living into that together, that's going to be how we transform Portland.
Director Hollins? Director Constan?
I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight. When I think about like, the years of commitment to our, our black children that's in this room right now, like absolute dedication, it's, it's pretty mind-blowing. So thank you. And thank you for still paying attention and caring. And we do have an extraordinary opportunity right now. We have it with Jefferson High School and the money committed from the bond. We have it with the Center for Black Excellence and how we're going to, as a community, decide that we want to prioritize efforts with, with that opportunity. So it, it's, it is a new day in a way, because we, we have set our intention and we have some resources to make it happen. And I, I want to thank everybody who worked on the details of this agreement, because even though I think there was pretty unanimous agreement about where we wanted to go, it was a little tricky figuring out how we were going to get there. And so thank you to those who really put in the, the work and the heart, and also the flexibility and the willingness to compromise and, and, and share power. It's really important. So it's good to see all of you here, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I've already said that I loved that the vision was explained in that point B of what was here, and going past nostalgia to what can be, what the future holds, especially for our kids. Really grateful to the community and those of you I've known for, you know, decades and seeing these faces that were all aging together beautifully. And I'm really, really excited to see what happens on the ground with the tremendous amount of investment that we're putting in Jefferson High School, we're putting into the Center for Black Student Excellence, moving Tubman. And I hope I'm around in 10 or 20 years to see the impact of all these, all of these, these investments.
Great. Thank you. The board will now vote on Resolution 6581, Resolution approving agreement to collaborate with the Center for Black Excellence to advance- agreement to collaborate with the Center for Black Excellence to advance black student excellence at Portland Public Schools. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6581 is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Congratulations. Chair Scott, I know I don't get a vote, but yes. Thank you, Superintendent. You're the one who has to make sure this vision works. So thank you. Thank you, everybody. Uh, moving on, um, to our next item, the life and legacy of Dr. Matthew Prophet. Um, this past June, Dr. Matthew Prophet, former superintendent of Portland Public Schools, passed away. Dr. Prophet made many contributions to this city and to the district. Tonight, we have a request to honor him with a presentation on his life and legacy. We have former PPS Principal Kevin Bacon here tonight, who's the president of the Oregon Alliance of Black School Educators. Welcome, Mr. Bacon. And if you could please introduce your colleagues who will be presenting with you tonight as well.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yes. I'm COVID free as of.
Oh, that wasn't my worry.
Okay. Good evening, Board Chair Scott, Board members, Superintendent Guerrero. My name is Kevin Bacon. I'm the president of the nonprofit that has been referenced a number of times tonight, the Oregon Alliance of Black School Educators, ORABZI for short. Seated beside me is Dr. Harriet Adair, former PPS Deputy Superintendent and holder of many positions during her tenure of 40-plus years of exemplary service at Portland Public Schools, much of which was babysitting me.
You're a great teacher. I still love you, darling.
Yes. Yes. She was, she was my principal. We are here this evening representing our board, our members, and over 200 signatures from the community at large in support of our request. ORABZI was founded in 1975 by Dr. Ernest Hartsog. The National Alliance of Black School Educators was founded in 1973. Our alliance is one of over 35 affiliates across the country and globe. There are over 800 educators that identify as black of African descent across Oregon. And that is without counting higher education. In cities like La Grande, Pendleton, Bend, Ashland, Medford, Eugene, Albany, Salem, up and down the coast, and of course, the Portland metro area, black educators are in our schools, teaching, coaching, counseling, children of all racial and cultural backgrounds. ORABZI mission, our mission is to celebrate, support, and inspire ORABZI educators to provide the best educational experiences and outcomes for all students while leading the way on best practices for black students. It's an honor to be the newest president of ORABZI and follow the long line of incredible educators that were president before me. Dr. Ernest Hartsog, Dr. Charles Hobson, Dr. Winona Low, Mr. Nathan Jones Senior, Ms. Patricia Bat Bradley, Mr. Ken Berry, Mr. Leroy Patton, Ms. Lerlean Champsteadon, Mr. Michael Chappie-Grice, Dr. Keela Boyer, and Ms. Liz Cassen-Taylor. It is their legacy that energizes me and their support that guides me. ORABZI has always been on the front line supporting students and educators of African descent. In my first year of teaching in 1986 for Portland Public Schools, ORABZI was there for me and symbolized hope and possibility. An organization deep with my people, working at all levels of the industry, starting at the top with an African American Superintendent of Portland Public Schools, Dr. Matthew Prophet, and an African American Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Ernest Hartsog. Please understand that to a young 24-year-old, fresh out of college, I saw endless possibilities to my career and knew that a safety net was there if I stumbled. Dr. Matthew Prophet set a bar for me and others of all races to strive for professionally and personally. Now, I yield my time to Dr. Adair. And then there'll be a short video followed by statements from former PPS Board members Steve Griffith, Stephen Kefory, and Mr. Bill Scott.
Thanks, Kevin. I promise not to tell all your business. I wanted to start by saying thank you very much for having us here. I had no idea what else was on the agenda, but I've definitely enjoyed being surrounded by ex-colleagues. I wasn't the Deputy Superintendent, retired as an Assistant Superintendent, um, in this district after 47 years. And I'm also and I'm also a product of Portland Public Schools. I went to Vestal Grade School and what was then Madison High School. So I know Portland from years back, not born here. And so, it's very important to me, um, what happens in this world that has been my world for so many years. And I'm so glad to see all my colleagues. I want you all to be back there. I know you've got my back, especially my sweet, loving husband up there, Ken Adair, who worked at PCC. And I hope I get this letter right. Let me start. "The Oregon Alliance of Black School Educators, ORABZI, which is the state affiliate of the National Alliance of Black School Educators, NAPSI, joined by several others, some of which are present in this audience this evening, or appeared in the video that you're about to see, or whose names are on the petition or in letters forwarded earlier to the school board, are we're all here to propose and strongly advocate that the Portland Public Schools Central Office be renamed to honor Dr. Matthew Prophet as the Dr. Matthew Prophet Education Service Center. Dr. Prophet was the Superintendent of Portland Public Schools from 1982 to 1992. It is undisputed that Dr. Prophet's decade of leadership empowered constituencies inside and outside Portland Public Schools boundaries. For those on the board who, or the listening audience who, for a variety of reasons, maybe not even being born at that point in time, might not have been actively engaged in the schools during his tenure, so allow me to take an opportunity to relate the nature of the times. Dr. Prophet's tenure spanned the era when issues brought forward in a 1983 report, entitled Report on the United States National Commission on Excellence in Education, A Nation, Not Just Us, A Nation at Risk, The Imperative for Educational Reform. This document had generated widespread contention that the American schools were failing. A majority of the state's education agenda, state's education agendas, including Oregon's, were fraught with demands for a flood of local, state, and federal educational reform movements. Every aspect of the educational world seemed to be ensnared in crisis or in conflict, be it union issues, funding levels, desegregation-integration pushback, disproportionate levels of sustained academic achievement across all groups, employment injustices, lagging teacher recruitment and retention, or waning constituency support. Let me digress to say that I sorta heard some of that today. All in varying degrees were present in Portland as well. Across the city of roses, heightened tensions were exacerbated by the firing and unexpected demise of the previous Portland Public School Superintendent. There were also perceived inequities in local and state school funding, looming staff layoffs, unresolved community and teacher union conflicts, student and staff desegregation-integration strategy disputes, and irrefutable disparate rates of educational success in schools with student populations that were predominantly low-income and/or students of color. The dropout rates were 15.7% for Native Americans, 14% for Latinos, 12.4% for African Americans, 8.8% for European Americans, and 4.1% for Asian Americans, bringing the district's average to a 9.1 dropout rate. The district's struggle to dispel the plethora of local and nation-at-risk challenges marked the beginning of Dr. Prophet's superintendency. During his decade with Portland Public Schools, test scores across the district ascended as did the, did the public's support, confidence, and involvement in district initiatives and programs. His leadership energized the success rates of students and district staff, elevated PPS's standing in and outside the state, and garnered multifaceted constituency support from Portland's diverse communities, also from the diverse parent advocacy groups, legislators, teacher unions, fellow superintendents, and corporate and civic leaders as well. Under Dr. Prophet's leadership, all Portland students made remarkable academic progress. African Americans achieved 65% improvement in mathematics and 43% improvement in reading. Latino students also achieved similar gains. The percentage of African American high school graduates choosing to enter higher education post-high school rose from 49% in 1987 to 80% in 1991. And Portland's dropout rate was among the lowest in the nation for urban school districts. He was able to accept and separate people from their actions, differ or consent, and consistently maintain a balanced, inclusive perspective on issues. Working with and across PPS's diverse constituencies, he was able to garner the wide-ranging support needed to successfully achieve a plethora of constructive outcomes, many of which endure today. No matter if he personally agreed or disagreed, he listened and consistently responded in ways that evidenced an openness to implementation of diverse views and approaches, not his own. To quote the co-chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee that had participated in hiring Dr. Prophet, "Throughout Dr. Prophet's tenure, the focus remained on implementation of inclusive solutions. No matter the agenda, Dr. Prophet consistently was able to generate and implement strategies that achieved success for all factions, as opposed to being in a constant debate with, with various constituents. Despite the multiplicity of what could often be discordant constituencies, all knew their concerns and ideas would be respectfully heard across all of his decision-making processes. Everybody always felt heard." Dr. Prophet delivered on his assurances to stabilize the district's funding sources. Prior to implementation of new priorities and/or major changes, he established feedback loops and would always make sure community-based problem-solving forums would be held to gather input from a diverse amount of the constituents. Diversify, he would raise and officially recognize achievement across all student and staff demographics. He would implement organizational improvements and EEO-focused diversification and advancement across all employee groups. He would address and diversify school choice options. He would immediately address and provide feedback on constituent and staff concerns. He did not bring in a new multi-level administrative team. Instead, he openly negotiated the retention, diversification, skill enhancement, and advancement of existing staff across all of the district's organizational levels and employment groups. He made us all better. Dr. Prophet was known to frequently publicly acknowledge a plethora of students' employee achievements and/or, this is so true, and/or to take time to stop by a classroom, office, or district office to commend someone. And the reason I'm smiling is because he inevitably was on, supposed to be somewhere else instead of doing that. As a result, improvement, career elevation, job satisfaction, recognitions, and success permeated every level of this organization. During Dr. Prophet's tenure with Portland Public Schools, test scores across the district ascended as did the public's support, confidence, and involvement in district initiatives and programs. His diligent leadership energetically refreshed the insights and success rates of students and employees at all levels across the organization. He elevated Portland Public Schools' standing locally, in and outside the state, and garnered multifaceted, um, constituency support from Portland's diverse communities and parent advocacy groups, legislators, teacher unions, fellow superintendents, and corporate and civic leaders as well. To sum it up, Dr. Prophet brought equanimity to turbulent times. He openly considered and addressed voices and concerns. He assumed leadership of existing struggles, workforce, and structure, and, in quotes, raised the rate and level of achievement, successes, and satisfaction across every constituency inside and outside of the district. The impactful and sustained accomplishments I have mentioned are few, among a wealth of reasons. The Oregon Alliance of Black School Educators, joined by, among others, including but not limited to Oregon State Legislature Senator Lou Fredericks, who by the way, was employed here at that time, Dr. John Anthony, past president of Portland Community College, former state, state senator, state senator Margaret Carter, former Portland Public School Superintendent Carol Smith, Jan Kohler, the Oregon representative for the Educational Policy Fellowship Program, Dr. Kimberly Matier, president of the chapter, Portland Chapter of the Links Incorporated, Linda Harris, president of the White Rose Educational Fund and past president of the Links, past president of, of other organizations, as well as Steve Griffith, who was the past PPS Board Member, and Dr. George Russell, retired superintendent from the Eugene District 4J. All of them contacted me to make sure that I included you, let you know that their voices were part of this. And they all decisively endorse and respectively request Dr. Matthew Prophet become the designated name change for Portland Public Schools Education Service Center.
Could we, the video at this time, please?
We'll get it teed up here.
It's just a privilege and a, a great pleasure for me personally to be a part of, of, of this remembrance and of Dr. Matthew Prophet. I am, uh, Dr. Ernest Hartsog. And, uh, I am impacted personally by, uh, Dr. Matthew Prophet, who first, uh, when he first arrived in Portland, Oregon, he established himself as a well-prepared decision-maker. He was an excellent, uh, person in terms of, of budgetary and finance. And his memory was such that he won the, uh, he won the respect of the board, not only board, but his senior staff as well. Within two months of his arrival, Matt visited every school in the district. And once he visited, uh, the, the school or got a, a name of a principal, he never forgot that name. And he can recall 100% of the times.
Matt Profit walked into my house with Freddie right behind him, sitting on the floor of my living room with twelve Irvington Elementary School fifth graders. Fifth graders came every Wednesday to meet and hear stories from adults about being adults. The superintendent, former Lieutenant Colonel Combat veteran, walked in. I offered him a chair. He saw the bowl of popcorn on the floor in the middle of the ten-year-olds and sat down on the floor with them. Freddie sat in the chair with a knowing smile on her face. I had to refill the popcorn bowl minutes later. I don't think the children or Dr. Profit noticed. They were too involved in the conversation. While he was officially the leader of Portland Schools, he made it clear that he was serving the children and the families of Portland. Legacy is the first word that comes to mind for me when I think of him. Next is grateful. I feel grateful and blessed to have known and been encouraged by him and watched him move our world to a better place. His legacy looked at the past, used what skills and resources he had to address the wrongs of that past, especially the history of racial discrimination, and he was determined to chart a path for a better future, whether he was physically here with us or not. I think part of his energy was fueled by popcorn, and a good deal of his spirit came from encouraging the curiosity of children.
Carol Smith, retired educator. I'm honored to be joining with all of you in this tribute to Dr. Matthew Profit. Matt was a dear friend and mentor and inspiration to me as he was to so many of us. I first got to know him back in the early eighties when he was superintendent and I was the executive director of an alternative school and working on my administrative credential. And I called him to ask if I could shadow him for a day, thinking it would be a long shot, but he was who I wanted to learn from. And he responded quickly and was extremely generous with his time, and I spent a day with him. And he told me stories about his life and career, took me through how he organized himself, how he made decisions, talked about who he called when he had to make a tough decision, and would call people he would agree with him and others who would challenge him, just to check himself. We went to meetings, and it was a superintendent-sized day, so early morning till well into the evening. But I learned a lot and had just a great time with him. And he, we kept in touch throughout his superintendency, and he was a great advocate for the students I worked with and for my program. So then, many years later, when I became superintendent, he was one of the first people to call and congratulate me, with a very heartfelt congratulations. And we had regular breakfasts throughout the nine years that I was superintendent, and I cherish those conversations. It was wonderful to get that kind of time with Matt. I would say Matt had a lasting impact on education in Portland, in the state of Oregon, and in the country. And he was a highly influential mentor for a huge number of educators, and I consider myself very fortunate to be among them. Matt, thank you. I love you. I'll miss you.
For our final speaker of what is now the evening, we'd like to bring out someone who's doing a lot of good things for education in our community. In fact, he's our leader, the superintendent of Portland Public Schools, Dr. Matthew Profit.
Thank you very much. I would like to end my brief comments by reciting to you a poem that my mother taught me fifty-four years ago when I was three years old. It's a poem that I lived by all my life. It's a poem I know that many others have lived by all their lives. And through all the trials and tribulations that my mother had, all the trials and tribulations that my father had, all the trials and tribulations of two uncles that were lynched in Mississippi where I grew up, and all that they had, and all the trials and tribulations of the crosses that were burned in my father's yard when he ran for mayor of Oklahoma and Mississippi, I still say to you that whoever it was that said, "When the score is twenty-one to three, you don't have to give up," and I say to you that the time has come that we've got to stop crying about ourselves. We can help ourselves, and if you will live by a belief that what happens to you is not nearly as important as what happens within you, you can come back, even though the score is twenty-one to three, and we can help ourselves. The poem was written by William Ernest Henley. It's entitled Invictus, and I remember it, I think, from my mother taught it to me when I was three years old, and it goes like this. "Out of the night that covers me, black as a pit from pole to pole. I thank whatever gods may be for my unconquerable soul. And in the fell clutch of circumstance, I have not wrenched nor cried aloud, for under the bludgeoning of chance, my head is bloody but unbowed. Beyond this place of wrath and tears looms but the horrors of the shade, and yet the menace of the years finds and shall find me unafraid." And the last verse goes thusly, "It matters not how straight the gate, how charred with punishment the scroll. I am the master of my fate, I am the captain of my soul." And I know Martin Luther King believes that all of his life. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I think at this time, the former board members, Mr. Scott, Kefory, and Griffith are with us, and so we should let them have the...
When we need it?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
You guys got greatness in this room. And it really do, we really do.
You go first.
Yeah, I'll go first.
Are you going first?
Yeah.
And then Stephen, then. Okay.
Welcome, everyone.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Stephen Griffith, and between nineteen eighty-seven and nineteen ninety-five, I sat where you sit now. It's a pleasure and honor to be here. It's a pleasure because I feel I am in the hall of education, and it's an honor because I am speaking about Matthew Profit. It is a privilege to talk about that man. I heard about him before I came on the school board, and he was already high in my estimation, and he's one of the few people who, upon greater knowledge over the course of eight years, my estimate and opinion of him continued to rise and rise and rise. Very few people on close inspection merit that kind of an assessment. He was, to me, a man for all seasons, for the inside of the classroom, for the school board meeting, for the community, when people get charged about their children and their tax money, the business. He had it all, and he could adjust himself to every audience and speak to them. He was a man, I think, of goodwill, and I want to separate that between the good and the will. He was a man of good. He saw the good in people. He encouraged that, and he reminded me of this phrase from Martin Luther King, "The expulsive power of good." By just being a good person and seeing the good in people, he made everyone and everything better. He was also a man of will. When you ever, well, I don't have anything more to say. Look at that state, that recitation of Invictus. If you don't believe that man was passionate for his entire life, that every child shall learn, there is no such person. No matter how straight the gate, no matter how charged the scroll, "I am the master of my fate, I am the captain of my soul." That was Matthew Profit. As a result, he did extraordinary things. He united the community of Portland. He really united Portland. He increased and stabilized the funding of schools, and he oversaw the learning gains in all students. Would that any school board could say one of those three things as part of their legacy, and that was Matt's legacy. He was a model superintendent. He was arguably the best superintendent in the United States of America. New York wanted him, Los Angeles wanted him, Chicago wanted him, Cleveland wanted him, Houston wanted him, and he said, "No, I want to stay here in Portland." He was the Damien Lillard of his time. He was loyal to this place, and this place should be loyal to and honor him. It's the fashion these days to name public buildings while people are still in office. I think that's suspect. You never know why, whether you're cuddling up to power or not. Matthew Profit's not in office. He's not even alive. It's now thirty years for historians to take the measure of this man and hear from those of us who worked with him. And I think it would be fair to say that he was in a league of his own as superintendent of schools here. I am joined here tonight by two other persons who also served on the board with Matthew Profit, Stephen Kefory and Bill Scott, and I yield the rest of my time to them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. It's a great pleasure to be here tonight. It's really strange to be on the other side of the dais. I spent a lot of hours in this room, a lot of hours with Matthew Profit. You're gonna, you have heard and you will hear more plaudits for what a great man he was. I don't need to add to that. I simply want to say what an honor it was to be a member of the school board for what was universally viewed as the best school district in the United States of America, and Matthew Profit was largely responsible for making that happen. He was, but he was not just a great man, he was a great friend. We all loved that guy, and we enjoyed spending time with him. This is not just a hero with a red sky in back of him, as Tom McCall famously said. He was a great human being that we loved. I'll read you a list of names. Martin Luther King Jr., Rosa Parks, Harvey Milk, Caesar Chavez, Ida B. Wells. What do these people have in common? They're all great American heroes. They all have institutions or schools or streets named after them here in Portland. None of them ever visited Portland, even knew we existed. It's time that we take one of our own heroes and name this building after one of our great heroes, Matthew Profit. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Scott, members of the board, Superintendent Guerrero. I'm Bill Scott. I served on the board from nineteen seventy-nine through nineteen eighty-seven, so I experienced the last year of Robert Blanchard's superintendency and the first five years of Matthew Profit's. My first board meeting was the first one held in this building. The building was later, I think appropriately, named for Dr. Blanchard, since he initiated and brought the project of the building to fruition, centralizing and modernizing many services. His tenure was also marked by important and innovative commitment to standards-based evaluation and by confronting the challenges of shrinking student population and lots of other accomplishments. But by the time I joined the board, all those issues were eclipsed by the community's righteous demand for racial justice, moving away from dispersing black children around the district and toward a focus on the quality of their education. There was a big turnover on the board and a pretty messy transition. The board finally came together to chart a vision and define the kind of leader required to move forward. Miraculously, we found him in Matthew Profit. Dr. Profit quickly mastered the ways of the district and the community. He took input from every quarter and was willing to try just about any approach to see if it worked. His pragmatic, hands-on style, he knew everybody in the district, he knew every school in the district, he knew the community, moved us towards the district's goals, adding many teachers and administrators of color, injecting neglected history into the curriculum, and really making progress on closing the achievement gap, which frankly, because of the evaluation system that Dr. Blanchard spearheaded, was the first time that people really could quantify the achievement gap or knew, really knew the, you know, kind of, had the kind of numbers that are universal now. Matt Profit personified the goals that you have set for the district today, and so I wholeheartedly support the proposal to honor his tenure and to celebrate this magnificent human being. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and really appreciate everybody being here. Appreciate the video. Superintendent Guerrero, did you have anything to say at this point?
If this is the appropriate moment to do so, directors, I know you're aware we have board policy you would expect us to observe and related administrative directives around the renaming of facilities, and we've seen a couple of pretty groundbreaking processes, extended processes led by students and our school leaders for two of our comprehensive high schools. But the policy and the administrative directive also has a section on non-school facilities, and the language there is much more streamlined. And I think this evening, we've heard a pretty compelling request, a lot of compelling testimony. I feel like I've missed out on the opportunity to work with Dr. Profit and folks like Dr. Adair and others. But what I can say is I'll be directing my team to review this request in an expedited fashion and take some immediate next steps in collaboration and partnership with, starting with President Bacon of O-Rabsy, the Profit family, and others to bring forth to you a supportive recommendation that honors his legacy here at the Portland Public Schools.
So I think it's fair to wrap up this by saying more to come, and I think more to come quickly. So thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and for, again, for the video and the presentation. Really appreciate it.
Chair Scott, I just have to do something, just say thank you to everyone, but also, I've only presented a couple times and always forgot to K-E-V-I-N-B-A-C-O-N, Kevin Bacon. And that's in the record now, too, right? Kevin Bacon was here. And you might not know if it was me or the actor, but Kevin Bacon's in the building and on the record.
If I can still call you Principal Bacon. I just want to thank you, thank O-Rabsy for your leadership in bringing this forward and really putting a fine point on the ask. And I think what the superintendent was alluding to is that the process for us to move on this might not be as time-consuming or as convoluted as it sometimes can be. So personally, I look forward to doing anything I can to further this respect, point of personal privilege. Dr. Profit was a very dear revered figure in my household and a very dear lifelong friend to my father, who admired him more than just about anyone in our whole galaxy. And he, this is deeply meaningful to me. And he, this is deeply meaningful to me, so however I can forward this, I am at your service.
Thank you, thank you.
Sorry.
Chair.
Inspired by Director Konstam, because I was there, Director Scott, during the messiness before Dr. Prophet got here, and it wasn't a good place for our city. And in the 10 years that Dr. Prophet was here, I went to college, went to another city, but chose to come back to Portland because of what Dr. Prophet had built here, because it was the place in the United States where the promise of public education with diverse leadership was flourishing. And a lot of people really believed in PPS and the promise, and I think this is, you know, who you honor says something about your institution. And this seems, just like earlier this evening, late in coming, but really important. And you can still walk the halls of PPS of people who've been around for a long time, maybe not 47 years like Dr. Adair, but who talk about Dr. Prophet walking into a school building and knowing every person, starting with the most important people that he met, which was the secretary, the custodians, the school staff. And you don't get that by not being a person of integrity and a leader that people believe in and want to follow. So I'm delighted to hear Superintendent Guerrero that you're gonna move at due haste.
Thank you again. We're gonna move on to our last, oh, absolutely, Director Hollins.
So a quick story I had about Dr. Prophet. I was in school, I was in middle school at the time, and I remember him coming into the school. I didn't know who this guy was, and the first thing that was told to me that he's the boss. And be seeing that, you know, gave me that inspiration that, oh, black people can be bosses, right? And so that is kind of my first, right? But that's kind of my first for seeing, you know, a black man in a position of power. And it gave me that option that, oh, we can do this. And so I'm glad you said what you said, because I was literally in the, when you sent the email, the first email about Mr. Dr. Prophet, so I'd been getting writing a resolution to rename the BESC in honor of him. And so with, of course, with the support, right? Yeah, right, I got you, I got you. But I am very supportive of that happening. Hopefully, we can bring something that, a resolution, to the colleagues sooner rather than later. You said we could vote tonight?
I thought we was voting tonight, I was ready to go.
Well, we can, we can make a resolution from the dais, can't we, Liz?
Can we do that? Because I'm ready to vote. We have that authority. Is there anybody at this table that does not? I'm, I'm not gonna say no. I'm concerned about the one that will, but that's just me.
So Liz, how do we go about, how do we go about bringing a resolution from the dais?
Point of question, I'm actually not familiar with our board policy. We do have a board policy on renaming. I know it affects schools, I'm just curious what it, what it says in this regard.
It's the board's sole discretion.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Director Burmehwards.
It's the board's sole discretion.
She said it's the board's sole discretion. Sometimes we gotta speak into the mic when we know certain stuff. See, there's a time to be quiet, and then there's a time to not. When you know certain stuff that you don't, it's the board's sole discretion.
So, so do we just, how do we say it? How do we, how do we?
So you have a policy that you've enacted about how this process is, all the pieces and parts of renaming, various programs, parts of buildings, full buildings, school buildings, non-school buildings. That is a board directive to itself that you can override at your will from the dais. That is your choice. I think there's also some benefit of having a little bit of process, which is to fortify and formalize the selection, but this is entirely, that's not a substantive comment, that's a process comment that lawyers are keen to give, but you have, this is your choice and your authority.
Well, if we don't have any disagreements.
I don't think, actually, though, I just want to be clear about my question. It wasn't, I knew the board had authority to do this. I'm, I'm curious what the policy entails, because if, to the extent we waive the policy, that's all, I want to have a sense of what are we waiving in that process? And I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
The policy sets out the authority, I'm going mostly from memory, I've looked at the policy.
I've got the policy of this.
Yeah, I do, too, but it's several pages long. It was just revised by the board in about 2018, as I recall. It talks about the criteria for picking names, why it's important, the fiscal impact of the assessment of changing names. The AD that accompanies it talks about a process that frankly is largely geared towards school buildings, not non-school buildings, about engaging the community in understanding the history, the background, the impact. So it's a thoughtful process and policy. It's more process probably in the AD than you need, because this is not a school building with a school community and traditional school alumni and some of the constituents that are named that are consulted in that process. But there is a process that's, that's set forth that I think could be streamlined, but again, this is the board's decision here tonight about how to proceed.
So I think maybe I'll put the question to the board. I mean, I think, I think the, so, I mean, you're not hearing any opposition up here, and I don't think you're gonna get any opposition. I think the question is, do we go ahead and introduce a resolution tonight, which is relatively easy to do, or do we bring a resolution back in three weeks' time, right, at our next board meeting, you know, to do it then? It feels like that is really the, you know, the trick.
I would just say the board recognizes that renaming existing facilities or amending existing names is a serious considered decision and should not be made in haste.
That's in our own policy.
That's in our own policy. I think we should go ahead and do it, but just remind us of our policy.
As the person who helped draft that language, I would just say this discussion has been underway for quite a while in the community. There's also a clause about, well, there's also a statement that is ultimately the board's sole discretion. One of the things we could do tonight, maybe to satisfy Director Scott's interest, is a sense, a sense of the.
I don't have a particular interest, I'm just putting the question to the board.
You can have a sense of the, the board to support the drafting of a resolution to bring back to the board on a date, a date certain for the renaming, or it looks like Director Hollins just wants to go now.
The other thing the policy says is that we need to look at the fiscal impact of making a name change. So I just am curious, it doesn't seem to me like changing from, to Prophet would have a substantial financial impact, but do we know what that might look like? I mean, I don't think that would stop us from doing it, but it would be good to know what that would be.
Signage and letterhead.
Yeah.
And if we're gonna make it in three weeks, why can't we make it today?
Letterhead.
Vice Chair Hollins, you're recognized.
So I'd just like to make a motion to rename the BESC to the Dr. Matthew Prophet Education Center.
Second.
Third.
Education Service Center or Education Center?
Education Service Center.
Yeah.
BESC.
Great. We have a motion in a second to rename the BESC as the Dr. Matthew Prophet Education Service Center. We're gonna go to board discussion in a second, but Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Chair Scott. I also appreciate this conversation. I do want to note that last year, we did, this board passed an agreement of first write-off, first of right offer on this building. And so I want to make sure that we're clear in the language, and I would encourage you to consider that we would name any PPS headquarters after Mr. Dr. Prophet. So just wanted to make sure that that was in the conversation.
Yeah. In the ORABSE.
Just to state the obvious point, because the headquarters could be anywhere in the next 100 years. We want to make sure the Prophet name stays. Director Hollins, do you want to make a friendly amendment to your, to your resolution?
This point number two?
Hold on just a second, yeah. Go ahead, Director Hollins.
So I'll just make amendment that the name will stick with the headquarters wherever it is.
Great. So, and I believe, Liz, that's just a friendly amendment, we don't need to, yeah, that's consistent with the original one. I'm gonna open it up for board discussion. I'm gonna start, which I don't, I try not to do as chair, but since Director Hollins is already telling Matthew Prophet stories, I will absolutely strongly support this. I was also in school at the time. I graduated from Wilson at the time in 1991. And, and I'll say two things. I got a world-class education at Portland Public Schools, and, and I think you have to give credit to the superintendent at the time for that education. I did meet him, and the time that I specifically remember would have been, it was my, my senior year when we, at Wilson, the Green Machine under the direction of Greg McKelvey, won the National Jazz Championship. Greg took a bunch of white kids from the southwest side and taught us how to play jazz, which is really big feat, I gotta tell you. And after that, Dr. Prophet came to the school, and we were able to play for him, and I just remember his presence, because of course you'd heard the name as a, as a student, and sort of seeing him and having that opportunity, and I just remember the reverence that the people at, you know, at the school had for him, that when he showed up, there was just a, there was just an immense amount of respect. So I did not know him personally, but that was my own experience, and this is a pretty exciting resolution. With that, we'll open it up to other comments.
Okay, I want to add one more little story, which, Dr. Adair, you can probably, you could probably fill in the details, but when I ran for the school board in 2015, I went up and met with him and sat with him for about four hours probably, and he went through his boxes of materials, mostly what he talked about, was what a sacred responsibility it is to be in a decision-making position that affects so many children. And he really impressed that upon me. But he also went through these materials that essentially he wrote an ethnic studies curriculum. He created his own series of profiles about black leaders and like put them together in pamphlets. Do you remember what I'm talking about? He, and I forget what it was called, and it was maybe, it wasn't huge, it was maybe 12 or 15 profiles that he put together himself and distributed to the schools to make sure that children had an opportunity to learn about, about black leaders that were included in their curriculum. And it was just one of the many beautiful things he went through from his tenure, so thank you.
He made me know it mattered, I mattered. He was a great man. This is completely unsolicited, the people you never think about, and I believe, I probably could have, we could have filled this room if we didn't know we're gonna have this testimony with a bunch of people who were not all principals like some of these great people I'm surrounded with. Good to see you guys, by the way. You all had, I mean, these people are just phenomenal, these people in this room. And I just want to say that I'm so enheartened by this, all the hard effort this group has put into trying to get this thing just right, never did, I don't think we thought we'd come up with you guys actually making a decision tonight. Oh, my God.
Seems like you got it right.
Yeah, I, I just want to thank Director Hollins, because I was over here texting with Liz, like, how do I make a motion tonight? And I took no for an answer. I took wait for an answer, and I'm so glad you didn't, because this is clearly the right thing to do. So I'm excited to be able to support this motion tonight.
Director Burmehwards?
I wasn't gonna say something, but.
I'm sorry.
But, but, I want to go back to when we all got sworn in, Director Green and Director Hollins, and my former co-chair, Alonzo Poe, said something. He said, you know, don't waste this moment. And Director Green, I'm really glad you're not wasting a moment, because we've got lots of other, lots of work to do, and we should just do this, because it's the right thing to do tonight.
Director Green? Okay, sounds like we're being asked to call the question. Without any further discussion, all those in favor of the resolution to rename the BESC, the Dr. Matthew Prophet Education Service Center, along with any future PPS headquarters, all those in favor say yes.
Yes, yes.
Roseanne is asking everybody to come up to the front to do a picture, so we can do a picture all together up here in front of the dais.
Come on up here, y'all. Give me a small thank you.
I'm gonna get my pictures.
I know, I know.
If you want to be in the picture, come down front. If you want to be in the picture, come down front.
All right, we do have one more item on tonight's agenda. So, if the PPS Board could please return to the dais. We gotta vote on it in the next meeting within three weeks. So, we don't talk about it tonight, we gotta vote on it. We have the budget calendar. It should be quick. And Noberto?
Noberto Delgado.
All right, now Noberto, we're gonna end in a party, right? After your speaking, too?
Yeah, so we have one more item on tonight's agenda. And so, it is a tough act to follow. All right. Yeah, we have one more thing to do. So, we're gonna finish up our very last agenda item. Thank you, everybody. This is gonna be a total buzzkill as we talk about the budget calendar. Noberto, this makes you feel good, right?
Don't set up Noberto like...
Follow up that act.
Chief Delgado, you're not a buzzkill.
All right. Superintendent Guerrero, would you please introduce this next quick topic?
Yes, I apologize. We had no way of planning ahead for some cake and punch this evening. I do recognize the board is also interested and has asked for, and our CFO is here to talk about a proposed budget calendar. We'd love to get your input and ideas about. So, Noberto Delgado.
Yeah. Good evening. Talk about...
It's a tough act to follow, isn't it?
Definitely. You know, that's amazing, exciting, just inspirational. And so, there's still other non-exciting routine things to discuss. But, love that. And really presenting the board calendars, an annual process that we go through to kind of provide an opportunity around the blueprint of engagement to not only get a chance to engage the board, prepare staff, but also meet some of our statutory regulatory requirements that we need to adhere to when we go through our budget adoption process. And really, for today, there's no vote, not asking the board to vote. Really, to get some feedback. And then, we'd be coming back two weeks from now at our next board meeting for formal approval of the calendar. And I think one thing to note is that it's that fine balance between the gauntlet that is approving the budget, meeting certain regulatory requirements once the budget's proposed, and then working towards the adopted. But one of the few things to point out is that for this budget, we are doing more of an intentional engagement upfront with the board as well. So, thinking about feedback from last year, creating those opportunities to really engage the board in some more direct work sessions. But also, you know, last year, we also had ad hoc work sessions and ad hoc conversations. So, right, it's this general blueprint, but it does give at least staff a chance to prepare and work towards that. So, I'll pause there and just hear for feedback and comments.
Great. So, our work, the budget calendar, as Chief Delgado noted, is in our work packet. Any question? And again, we're not voting tonight. Discussion questions tonight, we're coming back on October 11th to adopt it, which is again, part of our budget process is adopting the calendar. And to be clear, I think you might have just said this. The calendar can change. So, we adopt it. That's something that local budget law requires. But we can make changes as we go along. It is not a binding calendar in that way. Nor do we need to adopt changes to it. It's just to give a sense of an outline. So, with that, any questions from board members about the calendar as proposed?
I don't have any questions, but I had just a comment that I wanted to thank you and your team for putting together, you know, a proactive approach. At least, it feels more proactive than the previous few years. And it looks like we've got, you know, eight opportunities to learn and engage in work sessions. And so, I just wanted to thank you for this. This is really helpful.
Thank you.
I noticed that we had quite a lot of misinformation tonight around our staffing formulas and how fat staffing is assigned and staffing that comes at the beginning of the year because of having to actually, we only get paid for students who are actually in seats. So, and some of the confusion that that causes in schools. So, I would really hope as part of our budget calendar that we have at some of those work sessions are really clear. I mean, I know we have the clear understanding of our staffing formula. We see it in your emails to us. I know we've talked about it in this room before. But to really help communicate that to us so we can be better ambassadors when we're talking with our public about those kinds of things around staffing. Because that seems to be a really hot-button topic for folks. And there's a lot of misinformation out there about the process.
And it would be similar to last year. One of the proactive things we did, we put out a Budget 101 video and had some Budget 101 sessions just as the public early on. And so, as we get more feedback and get a sense of like, hey, these are hot topics or things that we want to get ahead of. When we think about that October through November timeframe, like, how are we intentionally engaging the public? And add some insight and clarity around that.
I appreciate your comments, Director Lowery, because, you know, there's no such thing as too much transparency. And we can be clear about how our staffing formulas work. And then, still, there's a lot of misunderstanding in the community that does a real disservice. So, I'm all for that. And to see a budget meeting before the end of the calendar year is pretty amazing. So, look forward to that. And I think last year, we did feel a little rushed. And so, aside from you and your department putting together this calendar, I will look to our board chair to make sure that when we're having budget items as part of our regular meetings, that we're really devoting enough time to get what we need out of them. Because I know that wasn't very satisfying for most of us last year when we would get pretty crunched up with that and go late into the night. And we want to really give it the attention that it's due.
I'm interested in, of course, because of the committee that I'm on, the alternative and charter schools, the leveling out, how we're going to work with the alternative schools, the charter schools, as far as like leveling, so that they can be on a more equalized system versus the sporadic up and down. So, that they're not out trying to chase students and they can actually focus on the actual, the classroom time, the seat time. So, I'm very interested in making sure that we talk about that and have a plan or that it's discussed about the alternative schools.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes. And in fairness to our CFO, I had a conversation beforehand that I would be interested in seeing if we could extend the time period between the introduction or the proposed budget and our approval because it's less than four weeks. And just the ability for the community, unless we're gonna get the budget actually, the actual budget documents weeks before, to be able to go through them. I think it was about 400 pages last year. And ask questions and have you all to have the time to turn things around. Less than four weeks seems like it would be very hard to have a transparent, detailed discussion. And so, that's one thing, just extending that. Also, we have a work session in February, and I don't know if that's married with the staffing, when the staffing, prior to the staffing going out to schools. But I do think that is gonna be an important discussion. I think last year during the budget conversation, the staffing guide was the staffing guide that Dr. Adam Scottlin, he arrived. And I do think because of the conversations, and it will depend whether we're in a cuts budget or, you know, what's happening about the level of scrutiny and the interest in the staffing. But anytime there's a reduction in staffing, I think we need to be absolutely clear, like, how the decisions are going to be made. And also, the just FTE trade-offs versus classroom versus outside the classroom, so that we make those decisions, you know, intentionally. But that we have that because that happens so far in advance of the actual budget process. And it is the majority, actually, of the budget. I'd also note just that, given the timing, that if we potentially have a levy, that just to be cognizant of like, what kind of budget conversation we're having right in the middle of potential, also conversation with voters about the levy if we decided to go in May. And I don't know whether that's good or bad. It's just, it will be an environmental, piece of the environmental factors. If we're in a cuts and then we're also asking or we're doing something different with staffing than we've done in the past, and how that fits with our levy. I'm just thinking through that. And again, I don't quite know what, how it fits, but just it'll be part of the context.
In...
Please go ahead.
I will just echo as far as like, it's our high-level blueprint. Things may change depending on the circumstances. But some of the key things that are taken into account for this sequencing is thinking about the integrated grant guidance at the state. So, there's this effort to align certain funding to be more strategic. So, there's some specific steps that we're putting in place to engage the public. And in addition, to come to the board in February with a, right now, it's February, but it's due to ODE in March. So, kind of like working towards that. That's one key thing. The other key thing is the facing out of the federal ESSR dollars. We're gonna need to be having some conversations around what does that look like? So, prepping for that. And then, the third thing is the biennial budget. And I think that we are going to be in a situation where we're gonna have to be thinking from a contingency perspective, which may involve a levy and kind of thinking about what are the conversations? And in the most basic term, what are the packages that we put together and consider? And so, really thinking about how do we start these conversations sooner in our process? So, that when we get to April 25th, that proposed budget, hopefully, a lot of it is things that we've already talked to and we have a good sense of what this budget represents. And thereafter, it's, hopefully, we have information from the state, maybe some fine-tuning, refining. But it's essentially, we're all kind, we all have this, I say blueprint, but it's like steps that we want to take towards having the budget adopted in June.
So, I think, and I guess Director Birney Edwards, to your question, there's a trade-off. We talked about this last year. And to the extent that we asked for the superintendent's proposed budget earlier, there will be less accurate information. And already, I mean, you're talking about the unknowns of, you know, we won't know what state school funding is by, you know, late April. There's the levy conversation going on. You know, there may be other factors as well. So, I guess I would sort of ask you, one, what if four weeks is not enough time? What is enough time? And two, are we as a board okay if we do ask to push back the proposed budget? Getting a proposed budget that is, that will need substantial revisions to it. So, for instance, I just want to be clear, to the extent we say, Superintendent, we'd like your proposed budget two weeks earlier than that, four weeks earlier than that, that budget will be less accurate, which means that I think there could also be more, it could be a little more chaotic as we go through the process as we're constantly sort of updating forecasts and other things that we know.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've had five weeks in the past. Like I say, this is just, it's less than four weeks. And I'm just thinking the turnaround for the community. And I don't know what, like, I think last year, we maybe got the actual budget documents the week before.
Yeah, that's...
Which gives us a little bit of time to go through it and thoughtfully consider it. So, it may also depend on when we'd actually get a copy of the budget versus like the big presentation. And it also will depend, perhaps, again, because staffing is really the majority of the budget. A lot of those, at least the outlines of that, will be happen in the spring. So, it should be fewer pieces at this end. So, it a little bit depends on what kind of information we get up to then.
Yeah, so if I'm hearing you right, I think so, which I agree with. The more, the more we know about the structure and outline prior to the formal proposed budget, the more comfortable we'll be once we get it. And I think, I don't want to put words in your mouth, that the more transparent we are with the public throughout those conversations. So, for instance, in February, really being clear about the staffing model, right? And what that means.
And that's...
And really, I mean, I want to be clear. You said if we're in a cuts budget, we're in a cuts budget. We know that. The ESSR dollars are going away. We used significant amounts of one-time funding to fund teachers this year. So, we told the community that last year. I don't think they hurt us, but we told them. And we'll need to continue telling them all year long. Already, to keep the staffing that we have, we used one-time dollars that will not be there again, barring the state legislature coming through with, you know, a QEM level of funding or some other, you know, some other bailout. So, but I think what I'm hearing is the more we can be clear with the community about that, the, you know, the more we can bring everyone along in the conversation.
I think the other important point is that our budget grows every year simply because our staffing costs increase because of cost of living and other really important things. And so, even if we didn't have the ESSR dollars going away, we would be in a cut budget because we don't know that the state is gonna increase that money by the, what, 5% we need over what we got this year to just maintain what we have. So, I think it's pretty clear we're gonna be in a cut budget again next year.
Well, I would just say, last year, we were in a cut budget in classrooms, but we actually added FTE overall. And I think, I mean, those are just the conversations we're gonna need to have of what the type of investments and where they're gonna be made. And so, that we all in agreement and we know that when we're voting on the budget and can be strategic and also be informed by the work the superintendent is doing and staff with the strategic plan.
And I think that's, you know, the whole philosophy around how we were using the bulk of those one-time monies was in capacity building rather than in the classroom to try to mitigate some of the cuts that we knew were coming. So, it's that, making that really clear to the public about why we may have seen growth in certain sectors and really, really being clear. I know we talked about it, but again, helping people to really understand and internalize the choices we made around how we use the one-time dollars for capacity building. I think it's important.
Yes, I just want to just remind colleagues that this is not the budget conversation. This is just the calendar conversation first. So, I just want to kind of focus on that because it's nine o'clock. But I do want to ask a question around the CBRC. I see here we are going to be appointing the committee on the 11th. And I just want to know how that alignment is through the rest of the calendar.
Yeah, so, right now, I'll just add also, we have, I think, about 34 applicants for CBRC, which is amazing compared to where we were last year. I think it was four. So, that, yeah, so...
Hatted to Jordan, too, for helping make that happen.
Huge shout-out to Jordan on my team. They vision how to get out there, engage, and so, all full-on engagement. And so many mediums. So, we are in a...
Is there a TikTok recruitment video?
I did propose that. I did propose that, but I was turned down, I wonder why. But it's on the plans, yes. And, and really thinking about, now we do have 34 applications to review and come to for the CBRC review committee. And so that October 11th, right now, it's tentative, I know there's still some feedback to get on, like, will there be enough time to vet through the 34 applications? But from an overall sequencing perspective, it does align, so if we can have, if the board can appoint the committee in October, we would kick off in November around the same timeframe that we would have like before or after our first budget work session, looping them in, and then carry, eventually CBRC will create their own meeting schedule, but it would overlap just in time as we get into the meat of the budget conversations after the, the winter break.
Thank you very much. Any further questions about the budget calendar, please feel free to forward them to the superintendent and Chief Delgado. With that, is there any other business at this time before we adjourn? I said earlier mistakenly that our next meeting was on October 4th, it is not, our next meeting is on October 11th, and so that committee assignment, we can actually, if you could have that material, you know, to your colleagues by October 4th, which is a week before our next meeting, which is on October 11th, the meeting is now adjourned.